...of the United States of America and through a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this Westbury City Council, order roll call.
Shawner?
Here.
Rawlins?
Here.
Heitmeyer?
Yep.
Here.
Here.
We need to perfect and approve the agenda.
So move.
Support. Emotional support, any discussion? Roll call.
Rawlins?
Hi.
Heitmeyer?
Hi.
Hi.
Waterman?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Mr. Carey, consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support. Emotional support to approve consent agenda items one through nine, which are the minutes from a regular city council meeting of March twenty first, two thousand and eighteen. Approve Officer Parker and Peterson's attendance at the Open Side Rifle and the Slaughter School. Approve renewal of urban chicken permit for seven oh three West Agency Road. Approve payment in the next magnificent events. Approve payment emergency apparatus maintenance. Approve payment Dave Bazzine Electric. Approve liquor license renewal for Uncle Ronnie's. Approve a new removal of Nathan Anderson from the fire department. And approve the claims in the amount of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and fifty cents. Any discussion?
I guess you see to.
No, oh, and SEC Foundation, I'm sorry, I just read up. Any discussion? I, I know, uh, under the consent agenda, uh, is the, uh, renewal for, uh, the chicken permit. Toby is here, if anybody has any questions. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Heitmeyer?
Hi.
Waterman?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Rawlins?
Hi.
Mr. Carey. There you go, Toby. Thanks for coming. Staff reports. Dan?
I had something, but I can't think of it now, so I guess I don't have anything.
Eventually you will. You might have it, Dan. Did you think of it yet?
No.
Okay. Randy?
The only thing I have is, um, things are progressing down Broadway Street. They've been working very diligently down there to, to get as much work done as possible. They worked late Friday night. They worked part of the day on Saturday and, and, uh, we're actually working in the rain yesterday afternoon hauling dirt away and, and getting subdrain and stuff in today, so things are still moving along. Hopefully it warms up here before too much longer and, um, we're hoping by the end of the week that they'll be able to get some rock in there and, and keep progressing with the project, so that's really all I have.
Do you have anything for Randy? Matt, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, no, I just covered it all. Much, mostly, I ate that wind today, but it really helped right out that subject. It really did get better down there, so we're hoping that we should get rock down by the end of the week and start paving and get rid of all that.
Start paving when?
Uh, Mike Nelson called for paving, uh, for Friday afternoon, so that means they either set the forms Friday afternoon or Monday, so we're special.
Were there people down there today?
Yes, there were.
All day.
Well, not eleven thirty, but they must've went somewhere.
They might've went to lunch.
They must've went somewhere.
They were down there this morning.
I seen our, I seen our engineering inspector sitting there in his truck, but there wasn't no workers, my thought.
I was down there several times and they were, every time I was there, they were there.
Okay, good. That's all we can ask.
Anything else for Randy? Frank?
Yes, I'd just like to mention that the West Burlington Lions Club gave a hundred and fifty dollars towards DARE program. You did go into the schools, so we'll put, fold that back into the reward system that we have for the kids up there. Um, embellishment and design over on Agency Street, they resold, uh, some shirts for their reserves and gave them half the donation. And they brought over a check this past week, close to nine hundred dollars for our reserve unit as a donation. Thank them very much for the hard work that they did and that'll help supply our reserves with, uh, training and equipment. That's all I have.
Let me know if you got something to thank the board.
Yes, I, I always do a letter, I sent them actually a written letter. And then we send them, usually we, uh, Ringo or Jesse goes and talks to the Lions Club at one of their meetings about how they're doing changes in DARE for the year.
Anything to report, Frank? Sean?
Nothing to report.
Roll fires, good thing. Kelly, anything?
Not tonight.
Last thing I hear. Rod, anything going on?
No, we'll, we'll pass, Randy, there's a couple of fourth of July, I think, but we'll wait till we get further along.
Rick?
I'm good.
Case?
I'm good.
All right. Well, we had something here for citizen inquiries, but I don't see the lady here, so anyone else, maybe she can address council matters that are not on the agenda tonight? We'll go to new business. Item number one is consider resolution accepting real estate from Park Place West Condomining Association. This has been in the works for probably a couple of years now.
Yeah, since, ever since, uh, those condos were built. It's been back and forth between different attorneys and people that were in charge dying out there and other things, they made it get pushed back, but finally got it put together and, um, I don't, unless Randy has a problem with any of the work out there, we'd ought to accept that.
Um, we're good.
Motion to approve.
Support. Emotional support. Any discussion?
Just glad to have it finally done.
Roll call.
Please?
Hi.
Waterman?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Rawlins?
Hi.
Heitmeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Carey. Item number two is to consider first reading of the ordinance, meeting section one oh five point ten of the city code related to waste storage containers. With Levine's, uh, supplying everybody with new containers, there's a couple of things that need it to be changed in the ordinance. I think they're highlighted in red. So move.
Support.
Emotional support. Any discussion?
So, under item number two, that last sentence, containers for waste generated at assigned address only, so, mm, 'cause I, I remember that he had, the last time he was here, that some addresses have more containers than what they should have.
Yeah.
Is that something he's going to take care of, or is that something that we need to do as an ordinance for infractions?
Well, I think if they re- report to us that they're violating that, we can do something about it, as an, maybe as an infraction.
If people are hauling garbage in and they find out about it, like he was saying, that they were gonna start looking if they suspect it, that will give a little bit of teeth that we can do something about it. I think he'll take, he'll probably do, you know, suggest it or something first, but at, at some point, they may come to us and want help and this way we're able to do it at, with a municipal infraction.
Well, he just mentioned that if they did, then they would go through the trash and find out who it is. But, uh, elderly people that just have this little small bag, doesn't need the containers and that they can still, the way I took it, set on the...
Well, I think they're gonna get one, but...
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna want everybody to put their garbage in a container.
Well, he did not, he stated that if, he knew what I was talking about, that the older lady that doesn't need, I don't think she's strong enough to even walk out there with a container. Uh, she'll take that little bag out and just set it out there, which he said that they know those people and they would take care of it.
For the most part.
But they already ha- have, I already found out that they have one and they've been paying for one for years, even though they haven't used it, um, so...
Yeah, for the most part, they don't want people to use the, just sit bags out, but I know we talked about a few other things, but...
We're only, he knew what I was talking about, just a little, small bag.
So, will it be a progression of actions against those people? Is, is it start with him or, 'cause it's not really addressed?
I don't know, he, he didn't really say, I think that was, that, we can do it however, any, we, we normally do a progression, we're normally not very hard on people for doing stuff wrong. It usually takes quite a while before anything happens and I wouldn't say this was be any different than any other thing that we do. I don't think we're gonna go out and...
Are you gonna send a letter the first time saying, well, we're just one person living in this house, three trash...
Probably our courtesy notice, we'd send one of those out like we do for other little things that ni- very nicely says that we'd like you to do something different. Last two lines underneath number three, says trash containers may not be placed in the front yard for collection prior to five P M. Day before trash pickup, it must be removed within twelve hours after pickup. How in the world are we ever gonna enforce that?
I think it's just, in general, I don't think, I think that's about the same as it...
Yeah, we had something in there before like that, I, it was, it was just in there, we didn't really do much with it, but...
This is added, but it just is so that they're not putting them out on the street and leaving them out there on the curb.
What are we gonna do if they do?
Well, well...
We're not gonna do nothing. I mean...
I don't know.
I understand.
You understand what I'm saying? I mean, seriously, what are we gonna do? Send them a courtesy notice that says, please move your garbage cans back, I guess.
It doesn't seem to be a problem now, so we could take it out if you want to.
I get it and understand it, and I don't want them left out there either, but my concern is, is we, I was just talking to Sean about a couple of things before the meeting started. I mean, we've got all kinds of stuff, we say, you can't do this, you can't do that. We've got people doing it, and how in the world are we ever gonna police how many residences we got and their garbage cans? Come on.
I, I would really like to see that and look into a civil fine somewhat like a parking ticket is, and...
So your police have time to patrol the streets twice a week?
No, no, I'm not saying, no, but I'm saying that, um, Sean can write a civil citation just as easy as I wrote, um, A B C Pawn that time and file it ourselves. We file things all the time. It's civil or criminal, it meets on Tuesday afternoon at two. And if we do a, a, uh, small ten dollar fine or get a fine schedule for these fines, it's could be as easy as parking day.
I drove around Sunday morning at the, the part of town that was gonna get picked up on Monday. And especially those where there's no alley pickup and there's only one house that had a trash container out at ten o'clock in the morning. Everybody else was, you know, probably stuck it out later on during the day, so I don't think it's a problem. I really don't. I mean, you know, you take it out, leave it in, I'd...
I don't care if it's in there, I just wondered, I just, we sitting past stuff and some, some, sometimes I wonder why we even do it, because we can't. I, I will never get that enforced. There'll be, there'll be ten of them out on the streets, come Tuesday from the Monday thing and we won't do anything about it.
I think it gives you, just gives you something in there that if it becomes a problem for some area, then you ha- at least have something in the, in the code for it, but... You wanna take it out?
No.
I say leave it in for now.
I, it's fine, I just wondered if we had some idea of how we were going to enforce that, since we put it in there. I would, if we had some brilliant plan of how we were going to enforce such a thing.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Waterman?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Rawlins?
Hi.
Heitmeyer?
Hi.
Please?
Hi.
Mr. Carey. Item number three is to consider three-year right-of-way permit for Century Link to install fiber along Broadway Street, south of Agency.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion?
I'm not gonna issue this until I get the payment from them. I have a really, really hard time getting them to pay their right-of-way permit fees, so I won't issue it until it's paid.
They still owe you for some?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Crowner?
Hi.
Rawlins?
Hi.
Heitmeyer?
Hi.
Please?
Hi.
Waterman?
Hi.
Mr. Carey. Item number four, that comes fun part, review proposed updates to the city's sign code by Southeast Iowa Regional Plan Committee. Back in concert here.
Good evening, glad you're excited.
Yes, we are.
Uh, thanks for having us. Uh, before we get into this, I'll just thank the staff, uh, Dan, Kelly, Sean, we've met, uh, I don't know, three, four times on this and I think Con's maybe was roaming the halls and maybe even Rod once was roaming the halls and got sucked into one of these conversations, so...
Roaming the halls is right.
What?
Roaming the halls is right.
Appreciate you guys for taking the time and going through this with us, um, and helping us through this. I apologize too, I think this, I don't remember when we signed the contract for this, but, uh, we got behind, I think we had some staff turnover and had some other projects, but, uh, I'm happy that we're at this point here and, uh, ready to hopefully move forward on, uh, finalizing the, uh, the sign ordinance here. Um, so I'm gonna, I've got a couple of slides, just more of an overview, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Concha and she'll go through, uh, in a little more detail and trying to give you, uh, an overview of some of the specific, uh, updates and changes. So, I'm gonna go a little bit over the scope of work that we had signed, uh, when we first did this contract, uh, just read the, uh, actual purpose of the sign regulations, um, and really what this ordinance is intended for, and then I'll turn it over to Concha and she'll go through more specifics about how we've kind of restructured some things and some of the changes in the actual, uh, regulations. Uh, so going back, uh, to the scope of work, uh, really what we're looking to do is review the existing sign regulations, uh, update the formatting, uh, remove some of the unnecessary language and then consolidate, simplify some things. There's a lot of charts and tables in here that didn't really, uh, make a lot of sense, and so we wanted to try and clean that up and, uh, consolidate some of those. And then also a big purpose of this, if you guys remember, we updated the zoning ordinance a few years ago, and there's some references in there to the sign ordinance that didn't quite match up, or there's some specifications that were listed in the zoning ordinance that we wanted to make sure, um, uh, meshed with the, the updated sign ordinance. And then specifically, uh, there was some new districts in the zoning ordinance, specific use districts, specific to some things for the hospital and the community college, and it didn't have any regulations, uh, for signage, so we wanted to make sure we incorporated that. And then there's just, uh, uh, it's interesting as you go through this and talk about signs that, number of different styles and types of signs that are out there. Um, it's, it's a pretty long list and sometimes when you start talking to it, it gets kind of confusing all the different ones, but there's, uh, some lists of some, uh, additional types of signs we wanted to make sure to address, um, uh, that we see out in the community, flag, balloon signs, sandwich signs, snipe signs, which are kind of like the little signs on wire. And then, uh, also, uh, certain signs that are declared public nuisance, I'll give a little extra context on that here in a second. And then in the back, previously, it had some pictures as examples, but they were kind of hand-drawn pictures, pretty outdated, so we wanted to make sure we updated that with some, some actual examples that, uh, uh, show what, uh, the types of signs are like and how we can regulate those. Um, so the next slide, uh, this is just a little context on some of those nuisance signs, the obsolete signs, uh, basically refers to ones that are a business that is no longer there, but the sign's still there. So how do we address those and, and enforce that and get people to remove their signage? And then there's also non-conforming signs, which, uh, something that was put in place before, uh, ordinance was updated, so it's there today and could be there for a while, but if they ever make changes or a new business is there, uh, they would have to make changes to that sign to conform to the new, the new ordinance. Uh, so there's a couple of examples with the snipe sign and then, uh, Star Nails Down the Street here, uh, that has the sign that kind of extends into the right-of-way. Uh, so the next, uh, page, I'm not gonna read this entire thing, but this is, uh, right from the regulations, it just gives you an idea of what the purpose of this is, so, uh, purpose of the chapter is to provide minimum standards, I'm just, uh, give that as a keynote, and, uh, there's a lot of things listed here, and, uh, maintenance of sign and sign structure, not, not located within a building, so, uh, outside of a building, uh, most of the time not within the right-of-way. And then also, a sign shall not be erected in a manner that would confuse or obstruct view of or interfere with official traffic signs, signals and devices. So there's some, some signs that we'll talk about too, that, uh, maybe fell into that category. So when we went through to update this, uh, we had some other precedent that we looked at, uh, looking at other communities in Iowa, uh, so we have a list here, some of the ones that we reviewed their ordinance. Uh, some of these came from staff and some of their recommendations and then just, uh, doing some research of kind of similar sized communities or similar developed communities. Uh, so Oscar, Lucy, Coralville, Mason City, Burlington, Marshalltown are some of the ones we looked at. And then, uh, one other thing we wanted to address, um, and I think this was actually in the scope of services as well, is there was a Supreme Court case in two thousand and fifteen, Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, and just, uh, basically briefly what that said is you can't regulate the content of a sign, and so we just wanna make sure that what you have in here, uh, fulfilled, uh, that decision. So that was something that, uh, was part of the review process as well. And with that, I think I'm gonna turn it over to Concha and let her go through kind of how things were structured and, uh, specific changes that, uh, we've made.
So this is right from the sign regulations, talking about what we have, this basically shows the structure of the sign ordinance at this point and kind of lists all the chapters that are in the regulations at this point. So you would see like definitions, prohibited signs, how we are seeing for sign regulations, there's a bit, a piece about that, and how do you maintain, how do you inspect all these signs? Um, then there are specific signs which are allowed without requiring a sign permit, and there are ones that would need a sign permit, so we will go ahead and talk more about that in just a second. And then there are general regulations for signs not requiring a sign permit, like I said, and then, uh, this approval permits require the sign permit fee which would be established by the council. Then maximum permitted, uh, sign area was kind of important just to regulate how big a sign could be. Um, and then of course, there would be locations when you come down to permitted sign by type and zoning districts, just to make it easier on the reader to kind of understand. So we kind of categorized all these, 'cause there's a long list of signs that we're talking about here to confuse just anybody, uh, going in or coming in for a permit or just asking questions, so we wanted to classify those into three main categories, and the first one is detached signs, and we'll talk more about these, but then what's permitted under detached is what comes under detached signs, then permitted attached signs, and then miscellaneous signs. Um, and there's appendix with the pictures like Zach mentioned, 'cause we had to go around the community and look for pictures and, you know, the kind of sign specific, uh, which are unique to the community as well to kind of include them in the regulations, which were, some of them were missing in the, in the, in the existing ordinance. So just to set a base, of course, we updated the zoning, uh, ordinance last year, so we added the specific use, community college, and we added the medical center, specific use. These two are new categories, but apart from that, we looking at other zoning districts which were already there, like ag, rural, single family, so we kind of familiar with the, with all these zoning districts apart from the ones that were added in two thousand and sixteen. Then it was really important to kind of outright say which signs would not be permitted or the ones which are prohibited in all zoning districts, and that's something that you would see in the document, if you look at, uh, sign regulations, you would see that we kind of mentioned these upfront so that people don't confuse the ones that are permitted and the ones that are prohibited. So the ones prohibited, the first one is fin signs, and, uh, this is actually a part of the existing ordinance which kind of, uh, all the fin signs in the community, but we still see them around some, in some places, uh, we could capture some pictures of. Then any sign attached to or placed on a vehicle or trailer continuously parked on public property or public right-of-way. Um, and this is not prohibiting any identification of the firm, um, or any products, uh, or its products on a vehicle operating during a normal course of business. Then, uh, the painted signs, painted wall signs, which you would, um, see, this is not a picture from West Burlington, but just an idea to give, uh, what off-premise painted wall signs might look like, just kind of directing people to, you know, a place or saying, hey, like something like this, which would say, hey, a flea market going on or like there's parking available or something like that. Then snipe signs were kind of interesting and quite new to me, I've never noticed like so many snipe signs, but now I do because I'm working on, on these sign regulations, the, the widely things that would just pop up anywhere in the right-of-way, just, just anywhere. Um, and I see a lot in like, even communities like Iowa City, like they would say, you know, for rent, for lease and things like that. So the ones that are kind of like temporary, there's no quality inspection, nothing, they would just pop up just anywhere people wanna put them, so we wanted to address those in the exist, uh, in the updated sign regulations. And then, uh, a canopy sign which is, uh, supported by structural pillars or columns into any right-of-way, and Star Nails would be one of the examples which we don't want, uh, to continue in, in the future with this updated sign regulations. Then the obsolete signs, which, uh, Zach already kind of talked about, so I'm not gonna go too much into that. Any kind of flashing signs, um, except electronic message centers, and you would see these, uh, on the left, the electronic message centers at, uh, SEC, which is completely fine, uh, but the ones with the flashing lights which do not help illuminate the sign directly or could be distracting for a driver is what we think should be kind of addressed and regulated a little bit, and, uh, uh, any sign that is not a public sign that is located in or under or over a public right-of-way, except projecting signs or awning signs like we see at the Broadway here, um, or any temporary signs could be allowed with a sign permit, but then you have to go through the process. Now let's get into the permitted signs. So we talked about the ones that are not allowed in any zoning district, but these are the ones that we, I kind of touched upon, uh, when I was discussing the structure of these sign, sign regulations. So the first one you would see is a detached sign, and these are basically self-supporting kind of signs that you would see which are not attached to any building, and attached is pretty self-explanatory, it's basically any sign which is structurally attached to a building. And then miscellaneous signs, uh, were kind of a mix of the ones that would need a sign permit and some of them won't, so we kind of explained that and addressed that, uh, when we get into the chapter. These are some examples of detached signs, um, electric sign, of course, at SEC, which, uh, I kind of showed before. Billboard signs, of course, it could be a hundred square feet or more, uh, so the bigger billboard signs where you would actually change the sign each time, but the, but the structure of the billboard would actually stay. Um, the ground signs, uh, which are of course kind of, um, light pole signs, but a little difference is they're like in the ground and kind of stable. Banner signs are just the ones that we, we got this picture from Kelly, I guess, from, uh, which was up, like banner signs are the fabric ones which could be mounted on a pole or like a light, a street light, and then pole signs that we see, uh, at the bottom. So these are all the detached signs. Then these are attached signs, like I said, could be a part of the building, um, like any awning sign, any canopy sign which could be projecting, but then, uh, the sign or it talks about like car wash and all that kind of stuff on, on the roof itself. Then projecting signs, like the one that's kind of jumping out from the building. Roof sign would be mounted on top of the building, and then wall signs again, uh, straightforward with any sign that's a part of the wall, or it's mounted on the wall. And these are the kinds which we kind of threw under miscellaneous signs, uh, which would be permitted, some of them, like I said, with the, they would need a sign permit and some of them won't. So any kind of portable sign which could be trailers and is movable, so you can actually move it on site, on your lot area, just anywhere. Um, portable sign could also be a sandwich sign for like B one district, if you wanna, if a cafe or like some outdoor cafe wants to put like a sandwich board saying specials today or something like that, would be a sandwich board, which is a part of the portable sign. And then flag signs, again, are pretty self-explanatory, the, uh, just like, again, the pennant and attached to a pole, and then real estate signs. And we'll discuss more about the ones which will need sign permits and which won't. Uh, home occupation sign was actually addressed in the zoning ordinance, uh, and so we wanted to keep it consistent, uh, consistent with the sign regulations, so we have the same language from the zoning ordinance and the sign regulations. Any kind of incidental sign is something that we, um, kind of addressed in place of small announcement sign, and these could be any directional signs, but again, you know, regulating the quality of the sign, so something like this, which two rivers has, um, just saying drive up K T M or McDonald's or... So something like this which two rivers has just saying drive up ATM or McDonald's or something like that. And then balloon signs which we see sometimes in, in our community. Then there of course, we wanted to send, set some regulations for any signs which do not need a sign permit. So you might need, you might not have to go through a process for a sign permit. But there's still some regulations, some rules that we wanted to lay out for everybody. And the first one is again, the strobe lighting to eliminate, illuminate any kind of signs. Any sign do not swing due to wind action or other force. And we thought this was important just to not distract any driver, you know, going by. You know, something's moving by and, you know, with the winds and all that stuff, it shouldn't be a distraction. So anything that's suspended by chains, hooks or cables or any sign that is not constructed with a rigid material should not, should be regulated. Any moving, rotating or animated parts could be a distraction again. Then signs cannot be placed within the specified minimum setbacks. And we kind of specify these in the chapter and the tables that we kind of created just to set like minimum setbacks. Because again, if you are, if you have any sign within those minimum setbacks, that means you would have to go through the regulations. And then billboards should of course be permanently attached to a structure. Then these are the ones, any sign that is allowed without a sign permit. So the first three ones, home occupation signs, real estate signs and incidental signs. They don't need a sign permit because we feel like, you know, anybody could have a home occupation sign. But what we can regulate is the size of the sign that would fall under these three categories. But otherwise you don't need a sign permit for these. Any kind of survey banners, any seasonal decorations for Christmas or whatnot, you can, you can have those, that's not a problem. Any political campaign signs can again be, be out there without any sign permit. You don't have to go through the process or any public signs. And we kind of wanted to keep it flexible for, for a community college and for a medical great river. We wanted to keep it more flexible for the public signs. So we're calling signs at S U C C and S U M C a public sign which provided they're located beyond the minimum setback. So we kind of specify a 50 feet or whatever that minimum setback would be. And if there's any sign that they want to have beyond that, they can have. So these are all the charts and the tables that we were talking about earlier. So we start off, this is just an example of miscellaneous signs, but we have similar tables for detached signs, attached signs as well. So we wanted to specify like portable signs which would either say, so the first table that you see at the top, you could have signs that are permitted for all users. You could have a permit conditionally or you could, or it could straight just say not permitted. So let's look at portable signs that says conditional. And the condition would be that B1 shall not exceed a 50 square feet in area. So kind of specifying the areas and regulating those. And any portable signs may be displayed continuously over 60 days in a calendar year. Then portable signs, again, like for other districts like ag, portable signs may be located in permitted zone through issuance of a sign permit for 10, 15, 30 or 60 days. And we kind of discussed this with, with Dan and Sean and Kelly in our last meeting to kind of, because we were still thinking about all these like ideas of how long should that sign permit be valid for? So we kind of discussed that it should be a 60 day period in all other, in all other zoning districts. So 60 day would be maximum, but you can still get a 10 day permit if you need it only for 15 days, you can, you can get it for 15. So it would just depend, keeping it more flexible again for the users, for the sign applicants that would actually come in, keeping it more open-ended for them. So 10, 15, 30 or 60 days for them. Then we wanted to also specify and address like dimensions and setback requirements. And it was interesting, if you look at attached wall signs, a lot of times, like for example, it's a mall and I own this space, how I can have a big sign and then, you know, it's going beyond my shop area and, you know, actually taking over somebody else's space. So we wanted to make sure that that's kind of straightforward. So we're just saying that 15% of your wall area, so if I own this much, I can have 15% of the sign coverage for, you know, that mall that I own. Or, or if I rent the shop. So that kind of addresses any kind of wall signs. And then also kind of specifying the maximum wall sign area which would, should not be more than a 400 square feet. So kind of max, that would be the maximum that you can go. But apart from that, 15% of any wall, wall area that you own or rent, you can actually have a wall sign. Then this was an addition to the existing sign regulations. This was not a part of the existing one, but we wanted to create something a little more flexible and a little more detailed for everybody. So if a person like me comes in, I have no idea what sign is and what attached, what detached, I don't have to go through. It would be nice if I can go through the sign regulations, but if I can, we kind of listed all this in part of your application. So when I go in, I can actually see what detached sign is, kind of explains what attached and miscellaneous signs are. So I can actually read these one, two liners and kind of address which one my sign application would fall under. And then it kind of also addresses that, you know, it would be, it would be the responsibility of the applicant to get in touch with the city, talk with Sean, to kind of understand if they have any questions or they cannot figure out which one they fall under. But then these ones are all the ones that would need a sign permit basically. This is again, just the layout kind of specifies what the measurements, measurement units should be. What is the location of my sign where I want, want it to be mounted? My application date, my name, address and all those kind of details. And then again, getting into like detached, attached and miscellaneous signs. So for example, I come in with my pole sign application and I, I just mark that, say it's a pole sign. So now what's the height of my sign? What is the width of my sign? What is my plan to establish of my lot that I'm actually applying it for? And if I already have an existing, how much would that be and then how much do I want it to be? And then it might be for the city to kind of say like how much the square feet allowed would be since that's a part of the sign regulation. So you would know what the maximum size of your sign is. But then you can actually go back and check in the sign regulations for more details. Then attached sign again, same height, width, proposed or allowed. And then wall sign, like I said, 15% of wall area, how much would that be? So it's for the applicant to kind of figure out what that, what that 15% of his or her wall area would be. And then what's the proposed one? And then on the right, you can see we set like total allowed signage on building wall again kind of be trading what that 15% of it looks like. Then miscellaneous signs, this is again important because it kind of makes a note of the permits that are valid for 10, 15, 30 or 60 days for any portable or balloon signs. But for example, it's a sandwich sign, they won't need a, a permit for, for a B1 district. But otherwise they would have to sort of go through the process. So again, portable sign, flag, balloon, accidental. And then we kind of added the first issue date and the last issue date so that the city could actually go back and see. If I applied for a 15 day permit, they can actually go back and see my application which I, which I applied for like 15 days, for 15 days of time here. And then if there's any encroachment, that would be good for the city to know if there's any encroachment with, from my sign happening. So it kind of asks, is the sign located in or under, over a, or over a public right of way? So I just say yes or no, and then the city could go and inspect or, you know, talk to them further if they think that it's encroaching the public right of way. And then this is just a part of the application to include your sketch. If you have a wall sign, if you have any kind of other signs, if this would actually, you know, you can actually have a sketch that you can add to. Any comments that the city would like to add? And then at the bottom, you would see just the city use of, if the sign permit has actually been approved or denied. And then it would be signed by the applicant and by the living official. So this was all about signs we had. There's more tables like these, like we said, for detached and attached signs. But this was just the summary, we kind of wanted to consolidate everything for you guys. So if you have any questions for us?
Any questions?
And then I think Zach would want to talk about.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the, the next steps are, I guess. I don't know if this will come back for review or approval, if you have a public comment period or?
Yeah.
It'll come back for, we can depend on.
If you need us to come back and if you have other questions or want us to present on anything else, we'd be more than glad to do that too.
It's a lot, it's a lot to take in.
It is a lot to take in.
Yeah.
Sean, Sean's comfortable, I think, with it, the way it's laid out. So it's, you know, something that he's, he'll be able to use pretty easily, I think.
We would just have to have three readings, right? It doesn't have to go to.
It doesn't have to go to P N Z.
Okay.
No, because it was taken out of the zoning ordinance years ago.
But this does clean up some of the references back and forth between the sign code and the zoning codes.
I just got one question. I was going through the, the definitions under, it says political campaign signs, but nowhere in that definition does it say anything about political campaign signs.
Oh, it's on page 777?
Yeah, at the very bottom.
Yeah.
It says a sign of a non-commercial nature in the public interest directed by or upon the order of a public officer in the performance of a public duty such as safety signs, danger signs, trespassing signs, traffic signs, memorial plagues, signs of.
It's like maybe the wrong definition.
Other similar signs, I know, it's.
Yeah, that next, okay, we'll look at that and I'm not sure what happened there. Maybe we had a, a copy and paste error or something there.
Or we did this one, the last one.
Yeah, because that almost seems more like a public sign.
Public sign, yeah.
Then the fin sign, it says supported wholly by a one-story building of an open-air business. How's that? Isn't that the fin sign on, what you had on the?
Yeah.
Not the ones that are just on the pole? Yeah, then it says later on, okay. That's the only thing I, I seen, you know, going through it. And at first when I was looking at the chart, it looked Greek to me, but I understand it now after looking at it a couple of times. And.
Believe it or not, it's simpler than it was before.
I was, I was actually just going to say the same thing. There was probably three or four times the number of charts and tables in there before. And so I would agree that it could still be confusing, but it is, it is much easier to.
And our attorneys looked over and there's nothing in there that'll get us sued. It's a good story.
That's good news.
Well.
I was actually very surprised. We did not get really any comments from the lawyer.
We just created a sign masterpiece.
So, so I haven't had a chance to read the, all the official stuff. I read this little, brief little paper you guys gave me earlier today. So are we going to start caring then about obsolete signs? Is that what you're telling me?
According to this ordinance, yeah.
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 Why? Are we going to chase down somebody to remove the J C Penney sign? Asking the question.
According to this ordinance, there's, there's stuff in there that when, that we will talk about. If you want, if you want that out, it can come out, it's not.
Waste of time. But that's just my opinion.
Because I think.
Are we really going to go to Danny Hockett and tell him he has to take down the Sandy Sewing Center sign?
I was thinking the same thing.
Because why do we care?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
I'm just trying to figure out why do we care?
Like I said, this was pulled from a bunch of different ordinances and, you know, we talked about some things and took some things out and left some things in. And, you know, it's ultimately up to you guys to decide what's in and what's out, so.
And when we make this statement, we wanted to prohibit blah, 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 blah. Who's we that wanted to prohibit?
Well, the snipe signs was me because I hate those.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm just asking because.
I'll own up to that one.
We haven't suggested prohibiting anything at this point.
I'll own up to that one because they end up, those little signs on the little wires and they're always in the right of way. And the next wind blows them down the street and they get caught in the street.
So that's what you're calling a snipe sign?
Yeah, those little ones.
So if the guy comes in and wants to sell fireworks and he wants one of them lights up in the air going like this, we're not going to allow him to have that. Is that correct?
I think so, under this.
Anything with lights. And again, why?
The, the reason for that is, is the flashing lights are a distraction and, and dangerous for traffic.
Okay.
That's the reason why they permit them.
Have you been to the Ozarks?
I have.
Have you, okay, have you been to Las Vegas?
I have been.
I, I don't have a problem. Hans and I have had this discussion before.
I'm smart enough not to drive in Vegas though.
Yeah, I wasn't driving either.
Have you been to Branson, Missouri? What do you see? Three places where you see a lot of people spending a lot of money and there's all kinds of crazy signs. I'm just saying.
Like I say, it's ultimately up to you guys to decide what's in here and what's out.
And because we are who we are, and because I know Sean will bring some of this back to us so that maybe we can change it or massage it, I'm not too excited. But sometimes I think we get a little over.
So like for example, the blinking lights, let's go back a couple of weeks to when.
I was going to address that. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with the blinking lights. I have a problem with the color of the blinking lights.
Exactly.
That's the problem because it was showing like a squad car was sitting there stopping somebody. If it was all one color, you know, amber or.
And that was an easy fix because I called them up and they changed it. But if you, we all have driven up 61 to Dubuque at some point or another and you hit Macoconum, what do you see?
No one goes there.
Used to be when you were coming up, boom, you'd run into the same thing and they stayed that way up here until a few months ago and they actually moved it further south on 61. So now when you're driving south.
I always thought it was always against the rule to have red lights flashing. On any type of sign or car except for a police car or a fire truck.
Really on signs, there's not much that controls them.
I can't just throw a red light in my car and drive down the road.
Well, this, this is setting off to the side of the road.
I mean, it's just like a sign that would be even.
Larry Brothers always used to put a squad car, old squad car.
I thought they were amber or some color that they.
White, yellow, that's no big, not such a go crazy about. It's the color like Hans said, you know, these ones that have the red and the blue that are causing. I couldn't tell you how many people actually called my office complaining about when down the road here, we had red and blue going thinking it was law enforcement or an ambulance. And I even had, I had Burlington firefighters complaining to me about it thinking that they were coming up on something. I said, it is a little bit confusing, so. And that was just handled easy enough with a phone call.
You know, short of having you guys put this together line by line, we have to put something together and throw it out there and let you guys massage it the way you want. So that's what we've done.
Just asking, I, trying to make sure. I, I don't think it will benefit us to have Sean chasing somebody to find out how to remove the J C Penney sign. I mean, he could contact them all, I guess, and if they tell him to go away, then what's he going to do? And why is he going to waste that time doing that? That's my only point. I mean, who's it hurting?
I hope they leave it up because it still brings people in.
That's my only point. I, I don't, he doesn't need more things to chase that are unsolvable or don't really end up helping us. I don't, just my thought.
So like in my circumstance, when we put up the mini storage, it was an I, it was zoned I1, I think. And now it's been rezoned R4. And I have a, an attached sign on the mini storage, I guess would be classified as a wall. But under this new thing, since I'm in R4, I can't have a wall sign. It's not permitted. So.
Well, it is because it's, you had it before we changed the ordinance.
Basically how that would be handled, it'd be a non-conforming, which basically says you're fine, but if you're ever to, basically you do a new sign or change that sign, then you'd have to follow whatever the regulations of that district would be.
But you're fine if you have the sign already.
Well, that would be a problem because there's nowhere to put a sign in an R4. From what I looked at this.
You should be able to put, you should be able to put like a, for an apartment complex, be able to put like a ground sign.
Mm-hmm. Did we put it on the right of way?
No.
I'm telling you, the way, the way the mini storage is in there.
It's tight.
There's no sign, you can't put a sign anywhere.
What about canopy sign? Is that permitted in there?
Have you seen the mini storage? Do you want me to put a canopy up on the, for a sign?
Isn't it on side of the building?
It's on the side of the building. I guess it's considered a wall sign.
Yeah, it's considered a wall sign.
There's nowhere, no other place.
When they're really. I'm not sure where the property line lies, but I'm gonna take a stab at that. It probably runs right up to where you have your cement, that little grassy area is the right of way and that's it, right? And you can't go placing it in the right of way, obviously.
And, and I, you know, I'm really nice. I mow the right of way for our city.
So does everybody else sits at this table.
At, at the end of the road measures.
Well, I don't think, I don't think we'd ought to allow that in every R, but maybe there ought to be a mechanism for, like, kinda like we do with the zoning hardship, that if there's a situation, Sean can make the determination to, you know, to allow it or not allow it. I don't know if we have anything in there about.
I was just thinking maybe some kind of variance.
Some kind of variance, some topic in there. Makes sense because there's all kinds of circumstances out there that would.
You're never gonna, well, you're never.
That's my only point.
You just go to board adjustment.
Well, let's leave them out of this and just give me the power.
Well, because this, this is outside the, this is outside the zoning ordinance, so really they don't have any authority. It kinda have to be Sean's deal or whoever the next Sean is to decide if that's, or ultimately the city council, because it would essentially come to that, to come to whoever the council is at that time to, to decide if something's allowed or not or.
So if we accidentally knock down the star nail sign. Randy and I will smile about that, cause, but anyway. So if we accidentally knock down that star nail sign, are you gonna try to tell them people they can't put one back up?
We should because that one's, that is dangerous.
Yeah, it's.
They would be able to have a sign, but it wouldn't.
Be a wall sign.
It have to be a wa, it wouldn't be able to have pillars in the right of way.
That whole canopy should probably come down, actually.
They've got room above it from the, on the, from the building.
It's not that they couldn't have a sign, it's, it's really the, I'd have to read, I don't have it in front of me, but it's basically the fact that it's supported within the right of way is the issue.
But this big canopy over here that comes way out over all the whole sidewalk, that's okay.
That's okay, yeah. So we give Sean about.
They could do that there.
Cause this, that one's got those posts that are right out in our, right, out in the street.
The issue with that one is the posts in the right of way.
The structure itself, that one is actually using the city's right of way with the series of posts and beams to support it.
I'm just trying to.
Put a different canopy on.
If there's a canopy, yeah, projecting, we kind of mentioned the regulations that, you know, the building official has the power to actually determine and see how much the encroachment and, and encroachment is and what kind of encroachment it is. So it would ultimately be the city's decision, building official's decision to make.
So I guess what we're saying is some kind of a variance things. You can find something in somebody else's ordinance that lets the building official have some flexibility in some of this stuff. And that will take care of most of the problems.
No, cause when we built it, it was an I one and it was permitted and now I'm re-zoned to R four.
You're zoned, you're still I one.
No, I'm an R four.
Show us on the map that you're still I one.
Yeah, I don't recall us changing that, but.
I'd have to go back and look. I couldn't tell you.
Because you'd be off of that same parcel that the box factory's in. So you were attached to.
To the apartment complex.
Well, you are, but you're back, the back end of it goes up to that.
You're actually still an I one.
Am I still I one?
Yep.
Don't have to worry about that, huh?
But I mean, it does bring up a point that you can't address every sign, every situation. So it probably would be good to have some kind of method for hardship or variance or something like that, yep.
Absolutely.
I don't think it would hurt to go to the board of adjustment though for those few things.
Well, I don't know legally you can when it's outside the zoning ordinance. Cause they have very strict specifications on, that they are to do work on the zoning ordinance.
What does it say? Does it say, does it say anything now about?
No. A board of adjustment or zoning, planning and zoning, no, I don't think there's any reference.
Which is okay.
Yeah. The story I was told is that a council sometime took that out of the zoning ordinance on purpose so they could have control over the sign ordinance.
Yes, I think you're correct.
That was the story I was told.
I think you're correct.
And so that means planning and zoning's out and board of adjustments out and it says councils.
I think that did happen. About sixteen years ago. And I think.
It's hard to get five people to agree, let alone another eight.
And I think it was done so that this group of people could work with that gentleman and maybe massage some things when needed.
And ultimately this gives most of the authority to, to the building official.
So then, so then right quick, so when I buy, when I buy the Broadway next week and change it to Rod's and out front I put up my flashing Rod's sign, that's illegal?
Under this, yeah.
By this tone?
According to this, yes.
Okay, just asking.
What color bulbs?
Well, it ain't gonna be, it's not gonna be red now to match my truck, but.
Well, you probably. Work something out, Rod.
Okay, thanks.
You could probably have a lighter, it's not flashing.
It's not flashing, okay. I just wondered.
What's the blink rate set at?
Okay, see, we're negotiable. That's, that's all I'm asking right there.
That's the reason for the flashing ones though is it, it's can be distracting to drivers and that's the reason why a lot of places ban them. It's not, it's not just that we dreamt that up. It's, it comes out of a lot of places. But it's ultimately up to you guys whether you want it in or out. I mean, that's.
Sometimes you just drive into Broadway without.
Funny, yeah.
Alrighty, you got anything else? Well, we've got a couple of little notes here about the political campaign sign. I'm not sure what happened, but we'll clean that up. And we'll look at maybe adding something just for variance hardship and get that back to staff. And then if there's anything else you need from us, or if you want us to come back, we can do that.
Well, we'll, we'll put it up for adoption. It'll take three readings, so. Welcome to come back, if there are any questions.
Talk more about flashing signs?
Can. Alrighty, anything else? Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody having a whole business? Anyone wishing to address council and stuff we did discuss or didn't discuss? Entertained motion adjourned.
Actually, the Oskaloosa one, that was one time when we had a, we were negotiating a sign with Sherwood's and they didn't like something in our ordinance and I said, well, I've been told that there isn't a good sign ordinance.